Thank you, thank you. Since I wasn't. She convinced me. You're mine.
Especially the hospital. Hundreds of people are gonna be there yet for the hospital.
I was there right at lunchtime. How many what?
How many employees?
You know, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I can't find.
Gone.
No, they're selling them now with.
Oh, yeah, you know what, glasses. Sold them on you then.
No, they actually.
No, sounds like a bargain.
So like it's this big mama.
Still mustn't hang.
Well, yeah, yeah.
That's great. It's crazy.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May eleventh meeting of the Eastonville Township Planning Commission. I'd invite you to join me with opening the meeting with a pledge of flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, one of our regular members is not present, so I've asked Mr. Rush to be the voting member for the commission this evening. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from. Actually, it's the April thirteenth meeting, I think, not the March ninth, little copy paste, I think. I believe there was one small correction that I would offer in that the my notes I had the approval of the minutes. Was a five zero one vote instead of six zero and Mr. Deter had abstained. That is correct. There's no other corrections. I'll entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended this evening.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Will that we. Approve the minutes with the one correction is noted regarding the voting for the the March ninth minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, so that would be six zero one with Mrs. Burn abstaining. All right, the first action item for our review is Highland Commercial text amendment, providing for definition for and allowing drive through restaurants in community business center. Enterprise and rural business center. So who do we have? Anybody to present?
My name is Mike Davis from Barley Snyder. I'm here on behalf of Highview Commercial. I have with me Dave Guniya, who is one of the principals of Highview Commercial. And Dennis from HRG is also here as part of the project team. The petition, which is before you this evening, relates to the creation of a change that would allow drive through restaurants to be permitted by right in several different districts in the township. I would point out that we initiated this process by attending a November ninth, twenty twenty one Planning Committee meeting. To discuss a proposed Wendy's with a drive through at the State Road Commerce Park location. We were looking for some guidance from the planning committee on the treatment of drive through restaurants in the enterprise zone. And that is the the property district that applies to the State Road property. As noted in the petition, and as some of you may recall from that meeting. The enterprise zone allows convenience stores and truck stop uses by right. The definition of both of those uses include and allow drive through, drive in or sit down restaurant as part of the permitted use. However, the drive through use as a standalone use is not permitted by right by special exception or by conditional use in the enterprise zone. Drive through use is defined in the zoning ordinance. Drive through restaurants are not separately defined in the ordinance. And that's part of the reason why we're before you tonight with regard to the petition. I would point out that drive through uses are permitted by right in the community business center zone and in the regional commerce center zone. Recognizing that there is an apparent inconsistency in the treatment of drive through restaurants as related to the enterprise zone. The question that we then posed to the planning committee was whether or not the township would support a use variance. For the proposed Wendy's or whether it would make more sense to pursue a text amendment to address the inconsistency. And we were encouraged to pursue the text amendment, and that's why we're before you this evening. Based upon guidance that we've received as we've been working with the township manager, the township zoning officer, the township engineer and the township solicitor. Which we've been doing since early twenty twenty two. We've developed the petition, which is before you this evening. We've received comments and recommendations from all of those individuals as related to our first draft of the petition. Regarding the scope and content of the petition. And we amended it accordingly. So therefore, the petition you're seeing tonight actually has input from various members of the township as related to the application. As you look through the petition, you'll note that it includes a couple of different items. It includes a specific definition of drive through restaurant. That's included in section fourteen of the petition. It adds drive through restaurant as a use by right in the CBC zone, the enterprise zone and the RCC zone. And that's reflected in section fifteen of the petition. I would point out that the inclusion of the CBC and RCC zones was based upon a recommendation of the township solicitor. The petition also notes that we are creating specific use criteria for drive through restaurants, and those are detailed in section sixteen of the petition. I would also point out that there in section seventeen, we specifically acknowledge that we're distinguishing between a restaurant. And a drive through restaurant. We're making it very clear that they are not exactly the same. And that was based upon a recommendation coming from the township solicitor. And finally, we provide the legal rationale for the requested amendment, and those are articulated in sections eighteen and nineteen of the petition. I would point out that the Lancaster County Planning Commission has provided a letter with regard to our proposed petition. That letter was dated May third of this year, and the staff recommended approval. And in the LCPC letter, they categorized the requested change as minor in nature. They also noted that the requested change is consistent with places twenty forty. Finally, I would just point out that we believe that the requested change is also consistent with the township's comprehensive plan. So that is my my brief overview of the petition. Obviously, we're happy to answer any questions which the commission may have. All members of our team would be happy to address any items that you have.
I'm looking for any questions? Discussions? I read through. The ordinance or the text amendment or both. I'm still not quite sure what the distinction is between drive through restaurant. And the other. Uses we have that include drive through. Is there something specific that's? Well, because you said there's no definition right for drive through restaurant?
Right, right now, with the way your ordinance is currently written, your definition of drive through. Would have to end up being interpreted broadly enough to also include drive through restaurant. What we are doing here is drive through within the enterprise zone. That particular definition is not identified as a use by right, a special exception use or a conditional use. So therefore, the only way you could have any drive through facility in the enterprise zone would be through a use variance. We feel as though as related to the enterprise zone in particular, when you look at the existing definitions of your ordinance. You end up having a definition of convenience store and you have a definition of truck stop. If you go and look at those definitions within a convenience store, you can actually have dine in, drive through. So you could end up having a convenience store that technically has a Wendy's as part of it in the enterprise zone. But if you wanted to have a Wendy's separately as a use, the only way you could get there is through a use variance. So we feel as though when you look at the location of an enterprise zone in terms of proximity to major, major highways. And where it's appropriate to locate drive through restaurants. That it makes sense for a drive through restaurant used to be a permitted use within the enterprise zone. We have specifically not just said, well, let's make drive ins or drive throughs permitted uses because then you'd actually be then opening up even more uses to the district. So we actually tried to craft a petition in a way that was more narrow in terms of the additional permitted use that you're allowing in the district.
So in this district. With CVS, for instance, I just picked that name, be able to. Put a building with a drive through lane on it.
With with.
With the enterprise, in the enterprise zone, could a drugstore come in and have a drive through with it?
I don't, I mean, I don't know in terms of a drugstore use, whether that's a use that's permitted by right in.
Okay.
But.
Permitted by right, then they could have a drive through.
Again, provided that your definition of drive through would cover a, a. You know, a drugstore.
Confused. We have, we have drive throughs all through township. I guess we just don't have them in enterprise zones.
At the bottom line, you do have them, they would have had to have gone and secured a a use variance from your zoning hearing board.
I would venture to say that all the existing drive throughs were constructed before the enterprise zone was adopted in two thousand.
Could be true.
Yeah, fourteen or whenever that zone was created. I don't think we've had any constructed since then. And if it was, it was sheets and that was part of the convenience store.
My thought, just looking if you're.
I'm, yeah, please.
It just seems adding the definition of drive through restaurant is maybe a little too narrow because most of those zones, there's only a couple of zones where restaurants would be permitted. But then those zones would be excluded from having a drive through. If we adopt this, would a more streamlined option just be to change the definition of restaurant? To include drive through operations and then have the drive through. Right, go ahead, Brett.
No, I think that's just opening up to more drive throughs in more places than what the township's looking for. I, I think they're trying to limit drive throughs in the areas that are close to interchanges and higher commercial areas. So.
Couldn't that be picked up more as sort of the?
I, I think if you change the definition of restaurant to include drive through, then anywhere where a restaurant's allowed, you could have a drive through. And that's what we're trying to avoid.
I would prefer that.
I know.
That they be a little more flexible and add for a broader definition, but that's typical.
When staff worked with the applicant, we were specific to try and keep this defined, like, like what Brent was saying is. As narrow as possible sort of to to allow for this, but not to allow for those unintended things that might, that might come by by allowing for something. Else or again, changing a broader definition. So. And and I believe this was sort of the supported. Supported by by staff and and electeds.
I think just which zones, besides from like the village zones, would permit a restaurant but would not permit. Drive through. It seems like it's just the village zone.
I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to, I'd have to research that.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, right now, and the reason why the one change was made to the petition to add the two other zones other than the enterprise zone was specifically because your solicitor said. We're already allowed drive through restaurants in those districts. So it makes sense to end up specifically identifying that as part of this petition that basically you will specifically acknowledge. That drive through restaurants will be permitted in those three districts. The other thing that this particular change does that actually your ordinance doesn't do right now is it then also creates use specific performance criteria. Related to the drive through restaurant. So it actually ends up making it so that there's additional criteria and making sure that. The use is not going to have a negative impact on adjoining properties.
But with the variance, you can still get a drive through in the enterprise zone, correct?
Would have to end up going, but keep in mind that getting a use variance is the most difficult standard to get from a zoning hearing board. Because there you're going to have to end up showing that there is some unique hardship that ends up justifying the granting. And that you also have to show that that property is not otherwise usable in a way that's consistent with the zoning ordinance. To be perfectly candid, I mean, that's a standard that's almost impossible to meet. And if one neighbor shows up and says, I object, the likelihood that you're going to get turned down. Very strong.
Cindy or Nate, I'm not sure who's controlling the board, but they, is it possible to pull up the full zoning map? Reasonably quick. I just was kind of curious is what where the other enterprise zones are that we would be allowing this.
I'll get up for one moment.
Sure, thanks. You got it.
Very easy here.
Thanks, Mike.
Papers face. Start bringing it.
One of the dark blues.
So it's Columbia Avenue.
Yep. Two eighty three.
Two eighty three. Oh, that's over outside these Petersburg. All those businesses are.
That's mineral extraction.
Oh, that's.
That's a different.
Ah, that's a different blue. No wonder. I was just trying to think whether that is. This is this. Yeah, this is. Here's in back Sylvan, right? Oh, that's where this squash plant is. Okay. Down here. Put them down in here, too. But that's already developed.
Yeah, that's, that's running pump road. That's all developed.
That's all the industrial.
Yeah, in here, I was looking down. But these are already, these are already filled.
That's called has several industrial type buildings in the back behind that. That's disappear.
Okay, yeah.
As I was reading through, I guess the text amendment, was there something in there that said that it had to be also on arterial?
Or collector.
Or collector. Okay. So either.
Go back.
Either one.
If you go back underneath of the. Section sixteen. The use fronts on a street classified as an arterial or collector. Sixteen A.
I just wondered that that's probably all the enterprise in those. Yeah, probably. At least some of it.
Kind of like if we're adding it to CBC, if it's permitted in CBC, if it's permitted in enterprise. So basically, we're just excluding the village.
Did the, did this, did the staff give any consideration to making it a conditional use or a special exception rather than a permitted use?
The general feel of the board right now is to avoid adding more and any more conditional uses or special exceptions. They would prefer to do it by right if they can to create the criteria.
We just finished an exercise where we removed a lot, a lot of options that were conditional use or a special exception. Again, like she said, to streamline that. That was just finished in the last couple of months.
Does anybody in the audience have any input on this request? Any further questions from the commission? Okay, then I think it's time to make a motion and move on.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend to the supervisors approval of the text amendment as presented this evening, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Deter, that we recommend approval of the highway commercial text amendment. And everything that goes with it, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? That would be seven zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Might need it later. All right, the second agenda item is twenty seven oh one State Road, another text amendment allowing drive through and drive in services by right.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't expend too many funds on those.
It's like one step above teeth pips.
That's what we need, that's.
Good evening. My name's Claudia Shank. I'm an attorney with McNeese Wallace and Nurick. I'm here this evening on behalf of Oak Tree Development Group, specifically twenty seven oh one State Road LLC. I'm joined this evening by Mike O'Brien and Eric Scott with Oak Tree. We are here this evening before the board with a petition to amend the zoning ordinance to make two changes to the campus zoning district. I think it might be helpful to start out with just a quick overview of campus zoning. I know there are several new members to the board. I know there's many members who have been. On the planning commission for a long time, but the campus zone really is a unique zone under your ordinance. So the way the campus zone is structured, there are several different principal uses that are permitted within the zone. And those are generally larger types of facilities such as hospitals, schools, retirement homes, long term care facilities. This building itself and the Amos River Park are part of the campus zone. And those are the principal uses that are permitted by right in this zone. There are then numerous accessory uses that are permitted in the campus zoning district. Although they're deemed accessory under the ordinance, they're not things that we might typically think of as being accessory uses. They would include multifamily dwellings, convenience stores, banks. Medical office buildings, restaurants, retail sales. So really, the campus zone is designed to have sort of one main principal use and then a number of other supporting uses that are part of the zone. Another thing that is unique to campus zoning is the requirement that a master plan be submitted. So for any development that occurs within the, in the campus zone. A master plan has to be submitted and reviewed by the planning commission and the board of supervisors. Again, to ensure that those goals of achieving a cohesive, community campus type feel are being met when land in this area is developed. So as you may know, Oak Tree has been engaged in the development of a site which is north of Harrisburg Pike. And State Road runs right down the center of it. I have an excerpt from the zoning map here on the board to show the property. To the west side of State Road is the Lancaster Medical Center Hospital, which is obviously under construction right now. And in the terminology of the campus zoning district, the Lancaster Medical Center, the hospital is the quote principal use. So that is the main use around which the rest of development within the whole side of community is designed to facilitate. On the east side of State Road, we are currently working on development plans now. You may know that there's a sheet that's operational on the east side of State Road. And we're looking at developing a number of other uses in that area as well. The east side of State Road also has some land in the enterprise district, also owned by Oak Tree and is part of the project, but for purposes this evening. We're just talking about the land which would be south of the flood plain in picking up the zoning district. That's probably about thirty five acres. So we were before you, I think it was two years ago now with the master plan showing the development of both of these tracks of land, the hospital as well as the eastern side of State Road. And we're continuing to refine those development plans now. At this point in time, we're envisioning that there would be probably several medical office buildings on the east side of State Road. Also, an apartment building on the east side of State Road. Obviously, we have the sheets in place now. Perhaps a financial institution, quick serve restaurant. Again, these are all considered accessory uses under the ordinance because they're designed to support and supplement the hospital, which is the principal use. The reason we're before you this evening is to seek two modifications to the campus zone ordinance, which would allow facilitate development. On the eastern side of State Road. So the first amendment that we're seeking would permit drive ins and drive throughs in the campus zone. We just had a discussion with staff earlier today. We are going to need some slight revisions to that request based on the petition that went immediately before ours. So essentially, what that petition did is pull out a drive through restaurant and make that its own separate use category. Any other kind of drive through or drive in still regulated under the existing ordinance. So for example, you mentioned a CVS with drive through facilities. That would still be permitted as a drive in or drive through, but a drive through restaurant, that's a separate use that would also need to be permitted. So what we'd be looking to do would be amend our petition to permit both drive ins and drive through, so banks, financial institutions, drugstores, things of that nature in the campus district with a drive through. As well as drive through restaurants. Again, under the ordinance right now, those things would be treated the same way, but if the board adopts this new ordinance that you just heard about, they'll be treated differently. Our intent is to allow both in the campus zone. The second thing that we're looking to do with this amendment is to increase the maximum building height for accessory buildings. Principal buildings in the campus zone currently can have a maximum height of ninety feet. Accessory buildings can only have a maximum height of forty five feet. We're looking to increase that height to sixty feet. There's a few reasons we're making that request. One of the reasons is we're. There's a few reasons we're making that request. One of the reasons is we're proposing an apartment building on the site. The goal, and this land is all located within the urban growth area, is to be responsible stewards of the land. We'd like to build up rather than out to the greatest extent that we can. And this will allow us to build a slightly taller building and use our space more conservatively. The other reason that we're requesting this change is, as I previously indicated, we're projecting that there will be several medical office buildings on the site. Again, the preference would be to go up with those rather than out to the extent possible. And in terms of medical office building, there's often a taller building needed or a higher floor height for each floor due to some of the specialized equipment that are in those buildings. So if you think of imaging equipment and similar types of equipment, the individual floor heights are greater within the medical office building. So we also think that that flexibility is going to be needed as we develop medical office on the eastern side of State Road. So tho- those requests are the two requests before you this evening to answer a question that I think some of the planning commission members are likely to have. I did take a look at the zoning map to see where existing campus zoning is within the township. So the campus is in the orange. I know there's always the question of unintended consequences. So if we allow it here, is that sort of going to open the floodgates? Are we going to be seeing this built everywhere else? I don't expect you to be able to read it from there, but for my own purposes, I went and looked at each of the campus areas in the township and laid with that. And really, what I'll represent to you, and certainly staff can disagree if they know of an exception, but the campus is largely built out. So the building where we are now, High School, the Health Campus, Woodcrest Villas, Middle School, Homestead Village, the Elementary School, these are some of the areas that are zoned with campus. So I don't think there's a lot of existing campus land that could be developed that would necessarily be amped up by this amendment. And again, any campus land that would be developed using this amendment would have to go through that master planning process. So it's not as if they would just be able to go into the township city officer full of building permanent without really demonstrating that what they are proposing is pervasive and fits with the overall concept for that campus building layout. So that is what I have for you this evening. I have a presentation. Our team is certainly happy to answer any questions.
You used the words drive-through and drive-in. What's drive-in?
That's the terminology that is currently in the ordinance, says drive-through and drive-in. I ask myself the same question, but that's the language.
And.
It's like a CVS. You can drive, drive in to pick up.
Well, you can drive into a burger.
Sonic's a drive-in, like Sonic would be a drive-in. And they also have a drive-through.
I can go back and tell you the little pigs. You can drive in.
You can drive in movie theaters, but none of those around anymore, so I don't think that's necessary.
Drive into a car wash, but I'm not sure. Driving, driving restaurant. Your comment was after this prior text amendment, you might have to make some modifications in, in your application. Is that correct?
Correct. And I think really, we discussed this again with Zach today, and submitted it to the board for the text. I think really, a lot of issues we could make is instead of just saying drive-through, drive-in is permitted by right, we would say drive-in restaurant and drive-through, drive-in are both permitted by right. And that's necessary to capture both your quick serve, drive-through restaurant and your bank financial situation.
I noticed this sketch on the table this evening from Ratu Brookside Concept Plan. It shows two tenants, tenant one, tenant two. Are both of those, or it looks like tenant one might be drive-through only? Is that correct? Okay, it just seemed like that one had four drive-through lanes and really didn't have access from the parking lot to get into it.
That would be a concept for drive. One of the options that we choose.
Okay, all right. I was one of the people that requested to look at all the orange spots. Okay, I'll take credit for that or blame for that. And I think you're correct, and that most of it is built out, at least horizontally. My concern is that several, several of those campus areas are residential. And some of them are rather closely to residential. And I don't. I'm concerned that if, not so much with your accessory use going to sixty feet. But the existing ordinance talks about being able to go to ninety feet for the principal use. And I've got a question about how you measure that from what part of the grade and so forth. But my point is the ordinance is written that if it goes above forty five feet, it has to be at least ninety feet from the frontage. Which in some cases is not anywhere near the residential areas because residential areas may go around the sides of the back of those properties. So my request maybe is that while you're revising the text amendment, that you also revise the footnote that I think is listed where it talks about building heights. The existing footnote says, as I, as I said, ninety feet from the frontage. I would, I would request that it be changed so it's ninety from any property line. Period. That way, some of these zones that are next to residential have some protection. And even if you take a look at, at your, it's in your campus zone, but it's not your property, I, I don't think, is the oak leaf manner.
Right.
Okay, that's built out. But there's nothing that says they can't come back and want to put a six-story structure or go to ninety feet right there, and you've got residential properties right beside it. So I, and I don't think that would hurt your layouts at all to request ninety feet from the property lines, and I'm not sure.
So I don't think it would. Again, that's just pertaining, and I think you understand this, that just would relate to the principal use where we're only dealing with accessory. I think my concern about what you're suggesting is it would be a pretty significant change to what we've proposed. The changes that I'm talking about breaking out drive-through versus drive-through restaurant are minor. I think the kind of change that you're proposing would require this to go back to the beginning of the process. So, well, I think that's a change that could potentially be initiated by the township, and I think the township is perhaps looking at some other changes to the campus zoning district, was my understanding, in terms of maximum density and things of that nature. Maybe that could be discussed as part of that amendment, but I, I would hesitate to commit to do something that would require us to take this back to the very beginning of the process.
So what can staff tell us? Is something like that in the office? Would, would the, would, would the township consider revising that portion?
I don't know if the township would consider it or not. We can certainly present it to the planning commission board, or planning commission group, and run it through that way.
Okay.
There is a concern about density in the campus zone because there is nothing, but it yet allows residential. I'm not sure how, how strong the feeling is of the board to make that change.
Because, and I, I will mention another one, which is not too far from my property where I live, and that's Homestead. You just mentioned it.
But that's, that's something we definitely could take back and.
Yeah, I, well, then I would make that recommendation to staff because I when you take a look at Homestead, for instance, the only setback required is off of Marietta Pike. And you probably have five percent of their property line on Marietta Pike, and the rest of it is all surrounded by other uses. And so that's where my concern would be. And that's why I would ask that the ninety-foot setback apply to all property laws. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, as I was looking at the different different campus and properties, Homestead is what stuck out to me, and I, I was concerned about the height there with the residential property so close. So, and, and I'm not sure.
I think again.
Can be mitigated somehow here, because I think your side, it makes sense.
Right. And I think there again, you'd probably be looking at a, a principal use at Homestead being the retirement community, and they'd already have the ability.
They have the ability to go to ninety.
Correct.
So we almost, yeah, I like your change to say they've got to be ninety feet from all boundaries with that. Because I think on the backside there, but they go to ninety feet, you really are.
You, you guys are talking about.
Houses.
Still. So.
Any use.
Scott, I'm looking at DMA's review letter under zoning proposed maximum height, and in there you indicate that setback requirements table within the campus zone text, which requires the building greater than forty five feet in height, have a front setback equal to the proposed building height. And you make a recommendation, this note appears to only be applicable to principal uses as shown in the table, and accessory buildings front yard setback is twenty feet. We recommend that this note be clearly applied to accessory buildings as well.
Correct. Yeah, when I, when I read your review, I thought you might have been in my brain because that's where I was going to. I think yeah, any property line should have a setback commensurate with the height. And it can be one-to-one. I, I don't know.
Yeah. And, and again, I think it's important to keep these, these two things slightly separate in that their request is specific to the accessory and going from the forty five to the sixty. And the other item, like we said, is, is ninety permitted by right. And then we could, like you said, through the planning group, I think we could, we could talk about some of these other items is how we might be able to, to address the, the principal use concerns that you have.
And for our part, there's no objection to making the, the change that, or whatever change Scott feels is necessary to clarify that this would also apply.
Just so you're, a- as it reads, accessory use buildings and potentially that all buildings, principal or accessory over forty five feet in height, have a setback all yards equal to the proposed building height.
That's fine. That's.
And that takes care, that takes care of both of your concerns, really. If it's a ninety foot, it's right ninety feet, it's equal from all yards.
That's why I thought, you know, forty five degrees and equal to the setback. And not the twenty and twenty-five foot stuff.
Right. And, and you're, the applicant's okay with that.
I mean, the language of the ordinance just deals with the front setback. So again, I'd be hesitant to extend it to apply to all property lines as part of this amendment.
Yeah, it says all yards per the DMA review.
Scott's review letter.
If you have to go back and review it, why not change the whole thing? Get it all done.
And, and again, I think the, the issue is when you, when you go outside of what was advertised, it, it causes problems for the applicant where they have to start over from the very beginning, go back to the planning, not you, the Lancaster County Planning Commission, and re-advertise and go through the whole process again. So we, we did provide comments, and our comments were directed, as was mentioned, at trying to make sure the application that you just approved and this one are, are the same, and they move forward like that. Obviously, if you have, if you have two different applicants coming in for the same thing, they might approach it slightly differently, and we're just working to, to make sure that those two are, are meshed together as we move forward. And we did provide comments to both. The comments that we provided were the same to, to both. And I think, again, when you make your, your motion, typically, that motion is to, to, if it's for approval, to approve with them addressing the, the comments that were outstanding still.
Scott, your note zoning number two under proposed maximum height, that recommendation was a note to be put on their plan, not to the text amendment. How is that written?
That wasn't attached to the agenda, was it?
This, this was the review letter that Cindy emailed out earlier today or yesterday.
Yeah, it was for the text amendment.
Or note one, maybe it is on the text amendment.
So if it's for the text amendment, can we take action subject to staff and engineer comments? That mean.
But if they're going to revise the text.
That mean they have to go back to the drawing.
Yes, that was, that was what we were, we were commenting on to, to see if that would be agreeable to the applicant. And noting, again, what you pointed out, that that was only front yard and was only related to, to principal. So we had, we had similar thoughts regarding the, the setbacks for the accessory building.
I think to mirror the language that's there currently for principal buildings would, would not be problematic from our perspective, but to, to take that language and expand it for principal and accessory really goes pretty far outside the scope of what we're here to discuss, which is just the accessory buildings.
And again, that was, that was added as a suggestion because it isn't in the ordinance. It wasn't part of your petition, but to take the, I guess, the compromise step of being, of adding it to the front setback for this particular use for the accessory would be similar to what's in place now. If there was an effort by the planning group to look at other yards, the other yards could be reviewed for the principal and for the accessory use at the same time, because it would be a very similar subject to address.
And in fairness to the commission, the Homestead project has been filed. So any new ordinance or change would not, they would not fall under that.
Right.
They go under the current ordinance.
So can we vote on this as presented tonight, or do we have to wait for modifications to be made?
I think you can vote on it as presented, subject to the modifications that were discussed this evening. Recommend that it be approved, provided that the modifications that we discussed are made. And, and my understanding of the modifications that were discussed would be to break out drive-through restaurant and drive-through as two separate uses, and then to specifically indicate that the front setback equal to the building height applies not only to principal buildings, but also to accessory buildings.
And that was, that was staff's thought, too, that if, if these conditions were applied, that it could move forward with the conditions that they, they bring this into alignment with the other application.
So how would we address the side yards and rear yards and for accessory buildings?
I think that would be part, well, that would be for both, potentially for accessory and principal buildings, and I would suggest that would be part of a larger conversation, perhaps, that would, the planning group would have about the campus zone generally, and, and perhaps what limitations and modifications need to be put on it. Standing here today, I can't say what kind of implications that might have, because it's not something I've looked at. So I'm, I'm hesitant to weigh in one way or another on that.
I'm fine. I think we're saying tonight, though, as a, as a clarification, they're agreeable to, to acknowledge that the, the height setback requirement would apply to the accessory, too.
Correct.
The front yard.
If there was some ambiguity to that before, whether it applied to this one, too.
Correct.
I'm fine. I'm fine with that. Okay, once again, I'll ask, is anybody in the audience have any input questions? Further discussion from the questioners? If not, ready for motion?
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors, the text amendment labeled twenty seven oh one State Road, subject to the modifications discussed this evening, and staff and engineer comments.
I'll second that. Okay, I have a motion by Mister Rohr, seconded by Mister Deeter, that we recommend approval of the text amendment discussed this evening, including the two modifications, as well as any further staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So it would be unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next plane, plan is a rezoning petition for Marietta. Next plane, plan is a rezoning petition for Marietta LLC.
Good evening. My name's Riley Notzall. I'm an attorney at Barley Snyder. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Marietta LLC. I also have with me Mike Huckstah from ELA Group. He's the engineer on this project. The property that this rezoning petition pertains to is two, five, three, two Marietta Avenue. It does look like it's pulled up on the screen here. We had an initial discussion with the planning committee, I believe it was in February about possibly rezoning this tract. The owner of the property has had. Some struggles in figuring out what to do with it. It's currently zoned low-density residential and there's sort of like a barn structure that's been converted to a. A single-family residence and there's like an accessory building there too. And the barn structures rented out to a tenant for, you know, residential use. So in speaking with the planning committee and kind of going back and forth with staff, we figured that it would probably make sense to rezone this to medium-density residential. We feel that it would provide more housing opportunities for the region and also allow for different types of housing on this property. Currently, as low-density residential, it really only permits limited, single-family and duplex-style housing and we think this. It makes more sense for townhouses and kind of more higher-density type housing specifically because it is kind of wedged in between Route thirty and Marietta Avenue. In addition, there is a medium-density zone tract across Route thirty. That's where Lime Spring Village Housing Development is being built, so we feel this is kind of a logical extension of that zone. Kind of surrounding the property and across Route thirty or other commercial and medium-density uses as well. So we do feel this is kind of consistent with the way the neighborhood's currently being built out. And would allow for a more reasonable use of this property. Due to the site constraints, its location, the owner has had trouble kind of selling it to, to people and finding a use that really works for this property. And, and feels that this would make the most sense. Just to give you an example of some of the other surrounding uses, Christ the King Church, Hope Born in Christ Church, Office Basics, AIN Plastics, and then, as I mentioned, the. The Lime Spring Village Development across Route thirty. We did present this to the county planning commission. They recommended approval. Indicating that it's consistent with twenty forty and also noting that, you know, this is in kind of their growth area, primary growth area and. Makes sense for the, for the goals of the county in, you know, increasing density and providing more housing opportunities. We did submit with our petition, I'm not sure if you have a copy, kind of a sketch plan of, of what, you know, townhouses or duplexes would look like here and what, what the site may be able to accommodate. Just to give an idea of what could potentially be the result of, of a. You know, medium-density residential development on this property, so hopefully that was able to provide you with some context. So I guess to conclude, we would just ask that you would recommend approval of this rezoning petition to the board of supervisors and we are happy to answer any questions that you have this evening.
What's the zoning of the track directly to the west of this?
Same.
Low density.
Low density.
That's the church.
It's all developed by the church.
Yeah, it's low density.
Yeah, I knew the churches, so the church owns all of that.
Has the township received any input from the people across Marietta at all?
At this point, no.
Because it's been advertised, it's been advertised.
One time so far.
Yeah, I. I was part of that planning meeting and I'm glad to see that you moved the driveway over to, to oppose the street instead of where you had it originally. I think it's going to work much better. Even though we're just talking about zoning tonight.
Right.
Thank you. Thanks for making the change. Hey, for the discussion, not a lot of discussion, but anybody have any other question?
Do they have any traffic ideas of what would be potential impact on the, because like there, I just know it can get pretty. Backed up, so having a more high-density. Place right there could, I don't know if there was any traffic ideas that were looked at or what potentially could be.
We'll work through those type items if the zoning is, is approved ultimately with them during the land development process, so they will have to provide. Whatever the ordinance requirements are for, for a traffic impact study, if this, if this meets the threshold, they would have to do that at a minimum, they'd have to show that the driveway that they're providing. Has safe site distance in either direction and they'd be able to have, have vehicles go out on, onto the roadway, but yeah, that would be all, those would definitely be all things that we'll look at. If this gets through the zone, the rezoning process. So, so right now, they provided a sketch to give you an idea of what. And something could be done on that site, but really tonight's really just to look at the zoning to allow for them to. To increase the density on this, on this property.
The sensitivity there is just a little high because you have.
Sure, it, it is a unique piece of property, the way it's, it's positioned between two major roadways.
That driveway point, is there another driveway straight across from it?
That's a street, it's a street.
Yeah, and, and they, they, they were sensitive to comments that the planning group made at a previous meeting where the roadway was farther to the west and it was moved to the. It would move to the east to, to line up or maybe it was to the west, I think.
It was to the west, it was between the buildings.
That's right, and they moved it over the east to line up.
He was using the existing drive. It was widening existing driveway.
I think there may be still some discussion about a secondary access point that we'll, we'll have during the land development process, so.
And that's just.
Again, that's land development, but I know when you, the next step at the board of supervisors, that likely will be mentioned to you too.
Marietta, there's a state road as well, correct?
Correct, so there'll be.
So there'll be a HOP, Pen Dot Highway Occupancy Permit as well.
So how many, how many acres, how big is that thing?
Well, it's four point seven six acres net of the right-of-way, but seven point six gross acres is per our calculation.
So it's only really like the four point seven six.
And what's the density allowed in medium?
The, uh, the density that. We do have it on our sketch on the bottom, but can't really see it there. Different uses on this plan, we have a one single-family, twelve-townhouse and two duplex units.
But when we talk about rezoning, we have, we can't look at the plan, we've got to say what could.
Right.
Be put there. Because you could turn around and sell it to somebody after.
The lot density is four and, and five units per acre, depending on the type of.
And would that use the four point seven six acre calculation? It would not use the, okay.
The, the larger number includes a fair amount of property that goes into the Route thirty, Route thirty right-of-way that would have been, I guess.
Yeah, and so they can't count that in that calculation, so they could put twenty to twenty-five units max.
You would never get that.
Well, you can't get it in.
Maxed out on the, the sketch show could build in there.
Unless you ask for. Text amendment for height.
They wouldn't meet the setback.
And it is a unique site because of the, the fall from Marietta Avenue. Down to where we're showing a road. It's eight to twelve feet of drop. That's why we wanted, we were looking at using the existing access drive. So we know that works. But then talking about it, we could use that as a secondary access.
Correct, I think that was desirable.
Main access across.
And as a reminder, you'll have a whole nother opportunity to comment on the layout and design when they come through with their, with their land development plans.
I just always like to separate out the plan from a rezoning.
This does give you an opportunity to see, they pretty much did max out with the amount of buildings that you could fit on a lot and still accomplish the other things that need to be done. Sort of where you get to, but you're right, you could somehow technically possibly be able to.
I mean, just up the road, the Nardo tract was rezoned and. That could, who knows what'll come eventually there, so.
I'd just like to mention another unique. Feature of the track is that down the, the southwest corner, there's more of a drainage way there that has potential wetlands. So that kind of limits that use of that area, so where we're showing things that could be built, that is the development there.
Sessions we had during the planning group also talked about the frontage and how as you go east, it becomes very difficult to access the frontage of the, of the property. So to use this as single-family lots that would have frontage on Marietta would be, would be very challenging.
And the barn's not a historical barn. I've been in that. It's not that old. That could be torn down and expanded.
Okay, last call for questions? Ready for a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of the Marietta LLC rezoning petition from low-density residential to medium-density. Residential zoning subject to all staff and engineering comments.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion. We have a motion by Mr. Deter, seconded by Mr. Palakowski. That we recommend approval of the rezoning petition for Marietta LLC from. Low residential to medium residential, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that would be unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, so Schreiber Center for Pediatrics. I like to use a pointer. Hi, good evening, Brian Cooley with DC Unit Associates, representing Schreiber Pediatric. I am not here for any zoning stuff, so land development.
For a change here.
Yes. So yes, here for Schreiber Pediatric, I'll just go over the, the plan. There are some waiver requests. And certainly can answer any question the planning commission has. So Schreiber Pediatric located six twenty-five Community Way. On the screen is the proposed site plan. So there is. Existing building. And then the existing parking lot. There's also another parking lot located on the west side of the property, Homestead Village. And then Community Way, and then this is Good Drive located to the north. So Schreiber is proposing a five thousand one hundred and sixty-seven square foot building addition. Uh, that buil- building addition will be three stories high, so that building addition is located on the north side. Of the existing building, between the existing building and then Good Drive. In addition, Schreiber is also proposing a one thousand square foot therapy garden, which would be located. Just between the existing building and then the proposed building located in the back. Currently, there's a hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. We are proposing in the hatch area additional parking, so there'll be a total of a hundred and sixty-one parking spaces. There is a proposed sidewalk from the existing parking lot. There'll be a separate main entrance to the proposed building expansion. And the existing drop-off will remain as is. This does connect to public sewer and water through City of Lancaster and through Lassen. There was a zoning hearing board decision, which was granted. The end of last year and that was for a building expansion in the community business center zone. Nate, can you go to the next plan? Just from a stormwater perspective. There's an existing large basin in the back. Part of this building expansion will fill in a portion of that existing basin. So there are, there are, there are some modifications to the berm and spillway in the back to accommodate the building expansion. In addition, there is an existing rain garden that'll be expanded to increase. In size to accommodate the proposed parking lot and then the volume increase from the entire site itself. The site is over an acre. We do have an MPDS permit that has been approved as well as the ENS plans from the Conservation District. Nate, can you go to rendering, which was the main entrance? So this gives the, this is a picture of. The proposed building expansion. Here's that sidewalk coming out to the parking lot. And the existing building off in the, in the background there, so you can see that's a three-story expansion. I think you go to the other one. And then this would be the therapy garden in the back here. Also, that basin is back behind the fenced area and the landscaping in the back. As I mentioned, we are requesting six modifications. Those are noted in the David Miller letter, which is dated. April eighteenth of twenty twenty. You can see in the David Miller letter that all the technical items have been addressed. The only remaining items are administrative as far as the agreements, pay in the fee in lieu of, and then signing and recording the plans. Does the planning commission have any questions related to the plan itself or any of the modifications that are listed in the letter? Just going back to the conversations we had for the last hour, is, is this primary use or accessory use? This is in a community business center, so it is. It's not on the campus. No, this is, no, the campus is, I think Homestead is the campus, so then, but then this is community business center. You're right. Sorry about that. Zoning hearing board like five times for this project, so. All right. As far as I know, there's no setback issues. I, I will note that Schreiber intends to start construction hopefully in September of this year. Benchmark Construction is a general contractor and they anticipate anywhere between twelve to eighteen months for construction, for completion of construction. Schreiber, a little bit off topic, but Schreiber also has some facilities across the street, is that correct? Yes, and everything will be consolidated on this, on this property now. So then they won't be using the other property. Right, that's one of the reasons for the expansion and then the, the parking lot expansion too, to accommodate those additional employees and visitors. Either duck. Yeah. Are there general questions regarding the plan before we start through the modifications? Okay. So. I guess they're pretty standard-type modifications that we, what, like we've seen, you know, regarding sidewalks, expansion and so forth. Yes, there are. So as far as the sidewalks are concerned. So right now, there's no sidewalks along Good Drive on the south side along this property. They are located on the north side. Which is the other retirement or that residential community there. So we are requesting a waiver of putting sidewalk along the frontage, along Good Drive and Community Way. The township engineer letter has recommended approval of the sidewalk waiver for Community Way, but there'd be a deferred agreement. Along Good Drive and then part of that. In addition to the deferred agreement is the fee in lieu of, of the two-inch overlay of Good Drive and then that was also part of. I think the, the packet of information is with, with the approval letter itself.
Brian, your one modification is regarding lighting. What, what is the proposed lighting level that you're? Providing? What's the modification? What's the modification for that?
Yeah, Nate, can you go back just to the proposed site plan? I apologize, the lighting plan itself, I don't think was, is is on here, but yeah, so right now there is. There is a single pole in this island with a double fixture. And what we originally looked at was the lighting engineer had a light, a single pole with one light here. Another one here and then another one that we believe was right here, so that was three lights. That was, that was actually a substantial cost to Schreiber, so over the past two months or so, we've gone through a value engineering. Just to let the Planning Commission know that this this project was priced in November at around six point seven million total site work, building and so forth. We just received pricing about a month and a half ago and with the cost of material and supply chain, whatever excuses there are now. It was about eight point five million, so and it's. I mean, a two by four is a two by four, so it's, so we've gone through the process trying to value engineer the project because of Schreiber and. So the goal here is to get everything to eight to eight million exactly. So one of the changes we did make with the lighting plan was. Instead of having the three poles with the single head, we're proposing. One pole and a double light fixture in the middle here, but that requires a slight modification to. The minimum foot candle and then the uniform ratio, which is in the ordinance, so one of the things that the the waiver is gonna. Is gonna accomplish is it'll be a little bit dimmer along the perimeter.
No, I'm fine with that.
And it's very slight. But most of the time Schreiber is just open.
Because I just wanted to make sure you were. The modification was for a lower foot candle.
It is lower, yes. Sorry, that was a long-winded.
Yeah, I have no other questions then on that, thanks. And number five is pretty much our standard deferral also for curbing sidewalk and pavement widening, so that's nothing unusual.
The condition language that we've added to the end of the letter is nothing new, we've just sort of tried to formalize what was being done informally before. And and make sure everybody's aware upfront of what the expectations are, the the ordinance requires that the applicant. Improve the road to the center line, which would be they they'd have to come in mill and then put new pavement in, that just doesn't, it often makes sense logistically to do that, so. What they've agreed to do is to pay a fee in lieu of to the township that can be used for when something like that does does happen. So one of the, one of the other letters in your packet is an estimate from the applicant and our concurrence with it basically that says we agree with. With the amount of paving that they're losing in the dollar amount for it.
Quick question, at one point, not particularly related, but at one point there was talk of putting a roundabout at that intersection, is that? That's not.
Hush, hush.
This doesn't.
It had been mentioned in the past and I wasn't sure if that was still in the.
That that was, this project started a few years ago at this point and those two things sort of were on a on a parallel path and I think at. That point it was decided this project was moving forward and the other one, I think.
Fine with me.
There were some just logistical issues and some.
That's enough said.
About there.
Sleeping dog is a sleeping dog.
I imagine shooting a roundabout right on the area of that way.
Yeah. All right. Think the first thing to do would be to take action on the six modifications, six, seven modifications, no. Six more, six modifications.
Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to make a motion on this, I don't have any issue with any of them and and Schreiber, I'm delighted that they're part of our township, they do a lot of good, so. I would recommend, I would make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of modification waiver request one, three, four and six. And conditional approval of modifications two and five, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of modifications one, two, one, three, four and six. And conditional approval of modification two and five, modifications two and five, subject to the staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, others opposed, that would be unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'll also make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of the final land development plan, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second that too.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval. Of the final land development plan for Schreiber Center for Pediatrics, subject to all staff and engineer comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, others opposed, that would be unanimous.
Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian. All right, is there any old business that we should touch on? All right, project report, I hope everybody has read. The manager's report and everything that is going on or is not going on in the township.
And the only thing I had to add, what you have on your agenda was the Homestead Village expansion was filed, so that will be on your future agenda and of course twenty seven oh one has filed their plans. So that also will be, assuming their text amendment goes through, will be on your agenda.
Just clarification on the Homestead. I think my wife was looking online to see about this expansion and they talked in there online about a seven-story building, but I think you said it's only six stories now.
I'm pretty sure they told us six, it's about seventy-six feet high.
That would have to be six.
That would be six, yeah.
Yeah, we we did receive the package, we haven't, we haven't really dug into it yet as far as our review goes, so we will be doing that very soon, but.
Is it? Is it an expansion of the main cross building, the main building?
Yes, like that the core, the core main building, yes.
Going to relocate some of their parking areas. And put it in there.
I remember when John Beck was still here, he. He passed me one of their earlier sketches or requests and. I think I I drove back in behind the building there between that building and the neighborhood where I live and it's quite a lot of terrain back in there. But my my concern obviously will be that they provide buffering, because some of those trees, I think, are on the neighbors' properties and. When they go away, then. We'll need some buffering for a seventy-foot building.
I don't know that that they're running any closer to the property line.
No, they're on the same one.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're staying in that center, that center core area, they were sort of in an anticipated developable area, I believe there, and that's, that's where they're. I think I remember in the packet, they provided some renderings that showed perspectives from different, from different spots, so I believe that was available with with what we got.
And the twenty seven oh one state road, are they, it's part of their plan across the stream, I forget what that's sound.
Oh, the enterprise zone?
Yeah, is that part of the?
No.
No.
They haven't submitted plans yet, they they still have it on the market to look for a tenant.
Okay.
So, so what was this one for?
Oh, do we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this their, is this their sketch that was laying here?
That is their sketch, which should comped their amendments that they wanted to do.
But it's not the plan they just filed, you're talking about twenty seven oh one Brookside?
It is part of their plan that they just filed, yes.
Okay, this is, this is part of it.
Yes, that and the apartment building will be.
I was curious of that triangle across the stream, the hotel logs, it's, because they tore all the buildings down there. Now, so I thought they might be doing something.
Oh, white, that warehouse was approved.
Oh, is that already approved?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, that was a couple of years ago, we worked with the path through the through the site and the fencing and and all those other issues, so yeah.
And sleeping then.
Oh, yeah. There was a barn there, well, there was a house too.
That was when you were out skiing or something, cruising.
Yeah, must have been.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything about them moving forward with it at this point, we haven't had any discussions on the previous, typically those warehouses are approved. Sort of conceptually almost, and then they get a tenant and then they might have to tweak it a little bit to.
Come back.
Yeah, they just want to get most of their entitlements in place and then they can make those revisions as as needed.
So those of you that don't know Nate Sturgis, he's your new planner. I will be in and out, but but he will always be here.
Welcome, Nate.
See, they're kinder than the zoning hearing board, right?
Well, the zoning hearing board's kind to me, as everyone else.
It's on the record, Nate.
They know it.
Okay, is there anything else to come for the commission? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting. Eight nineteen or something like that.